All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for the December 12th public hearing. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone or electronic device to put on silent or turn it off, and if you have any discussions, please do so in the hallway to not disturb the meeting. You can join tonight's meeting in person also via your computer, tablet, smartphone device, or calling in. First, on the continued business, we have none. On the new business, we have ZB-2022-58, a variance, the option is Ty Long, property located at 359 Walker Street. Ty Long has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals to convert an existing single-family home into a two-family home. The subject property is located in a traditional two-family zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval pursuant to Section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area per dwelling unit and minimum frontage requirements and any other relief required in the Lowell Zone ordinance. Good evening, sir. You want to just come to the lectern? Just state your name and address for the record and just tell us about what you're doing with your project, sir?
Yes, so last name Long, first name T, T-H-Y. So we're seeking to get existing single-family converted to a two-family home. The reason is because, you know, we have a big family, so we got more people to live in, and it's legal over the two-family homes, so.
Anything else you want to share before the board, before we open it to the public?
I think that's it.
Okay.
That's all we have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? That portion of the property is closed. Any wishing to speak in opposition? Yeah, go ahead, ma'am. You want to come to the lectern, just say your name and address for the record, and just tell us why you're here tonight?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Darlene Dixon, and I live on Grove Street. I've been there for 30 years. And 359 Walker Street, abouts my property, directly behind my house. My concern for Mr. Long requesting his property be changed to a two-family is the traffic congestion on Walker Street. This area has double parking and is very difficult to drive on. A two-family would add to this already congested, crowded area even more. And this lot is too small to have two families living there. My other concern is Mr. Long has a history of not taking care of his property. During his house remodeling, trash was piling up, including appliances, wood, door, trash, all over his backyard. The property was smelling and was an eyesore. Also, there is an old, there was an old broken tree limb hanging over my lot. Many attempts were made to approach the owner, but he refused to address and remove this tree branch. Ultimately, my other neighbor and I had to pay $1,300 to have this branch removed to avoid falling on my fence in his roof. So my concern is this kind of neglect downgrades our neighborhood, and we work hard to keep our property up. Your considerations appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this petition? An opposition? An opposition? An opposition? All right, seeing the property is closed, we're going to open question the comments to the board. The chair organizes. Mr. Hovey, Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thanks. I'm just looking at some of the notes here, and it looks like the work has been completed. Is that right?
Mr. Long, can you just speak into the microphone, sir? I'm sorry, say that again?
Has the work on this already been completed?
Not yet.
Okay, so I'm looking at engineering notes, and it looks like we're looking for forgiveness rather than approval. The work's been done, we've had inspectors out, nothing's been inspected, so I'm a little confused where we're going on this.
Yeah, so we have not been, have any work done on the house yet as of right now, so we're just asking for, before we proceed.
Okay, it says in 2019, work was done on this site without permits. Is this news to you?
Yeah, I don't know anything about that.
So you're saying there's no work done as of right now on this property?
Not, not at this point right now, yeah.
Okay, it, I guess I'm confused here because I'm getting different notes. It says that work's been done on this property. We're going to need inspectors to go in, pull out drywall before we can inspect any new work. Is there, is that? I guess I'm, we have conflicting information on this, or am I reading this incorrectly?
Mr. Long, did you get the memo from the Department of Planning and Development dated December 5th?
Yeah, so we got that memo, but the thing is, when we apply, is seeking for this warrant, we have, have not done anything yet, so we, we have the architecture planning, drawing what they were, we wanted for the new thing, but we don't do any work in the house at all at the moment.
Mr. Hovey, do you want to continue with your comments and questions, sir, or?
No, hopefully somebody else can clarify what's going on on this.
Okay, thank you, sir. The chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to sound like I'm scolding you, sir, but I guess I'm going to scold you. The comments from the Building Commissioner clearly state that work was done without following the proper protocol. You didn't go through the permitting process. Work has absolutely taken place on your home, and yet you're here saying nothing was done. I also have the testimony of an abbot who says that maybe you haven't kept up your property as well as you should have, and that's caused problems. The fact that you're not even acknowledging your wrongdoing with the permitting process lends a lot of credence to the abbot, saying that maybe you're negligent in another area.
Right, so right now, that's what we're trying to do now?
All right, so it might be a moot point to you, but why did you not follow the permitting process? How did you think you could undertake something like this by skirting the protocol?
Well, in that time, I'm not sure because I wasn't a place in that time because she was, my mom's actually asking people to help with that, but...
Do you at least acknowledge that some work was done inappropriately?
Correct.
So, so work did take place?
Well, it might did take place, but this is a new thing that we're trying to request, so I'm not sure is that related to that.
Right, it is related.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll quote the, the comments from the Building Commissioner. He indicates that you're essentially asking for forgiveness for some previous wrongdoing, more so than asking for permission. I think you're asking for both, although you don't sound that sincere with your forgiveness part. You were working back in 2019 without the benefit of a permit, and you committed some illegal acts as a result. So now you're here asking for approval to turn it into a two-family, and your track record isn't very good.
I agree.
All right? So there are conditions that the Building Commissioner says have to be levied in order of us to even consider this.
Correct.
There's wallboard that was put up, correct?
Yep.
That all has to be taken out, taken out. So, I mean, you're going to be starting from new, essentially.
Correct.
Now, I have your architecturals, and those seem like, I mean, these are certainly done professionally, so you put your due diligence into this, and that's great. That's great.
Yes, that's what we're trying to do on, from now on, to get everything professionally done, so.
All right, so how do we, how is this board to be assured that you're going to be in compliance with any condition or any future permits that are necessary?
So what I'm, actually, I'm taking care of this project now since the beginning. We're going to have professional architecture designer on this and everything else, so we're going to do, we're going to start pulling permit, whatever we require for the home to be able to, to be up to code again. So that's what we're trying to do now. That's why we have a lot of line to clean up to it, and also in the previous couple months ago, we have a bad incident that people, you know, it's nobody living there, and a lot of things going on, so. And just she's by herself here trying to get everything done.
So currently, the unit consists of how many bedrooms?
The first floor is three, three-bedroom. So first floor, three-bedroom, and second floor is three-bedroom. And then we have attic.
So when the renovation is done on the second level, how many bedrooms will be there in that additional unit?
So it's only three. It's going to be three each, three each floor.
So it'll be two three-bedroom units?
Correct.
And the amount of parking spaces that you provide is how many?
Amount of parking space right now, we have at least four or five spaces.
They're stack spaces. Are they stack spaces?
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's why we ask for survey land to, did a survey for us on that time, too.
I don't know if I have the... I don't know if I can deny you this permit in a, in a just way, but I'd like to. I'm going to listen to the comments of my colleagues who I, I trust greatly, see if I hear anything that may favor your petition.
Right, so what I'm saying is that, you know, it's, we did happen before, everything has been happened before, so what I'm saying now that I'm going to take over project help out here, that's why we seen doing something, you know, everything is professionally done. I help her with, you know, the design, architecture design, with, you could see if we could do a land survey on it, and then whatever we need to do, we just need to get everything up to code again to bring this unit up.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair organizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for clarifying some of the confusion we as a board had. So just going back to 2019, was the house habitable when the construction was going on?
Say it again, I'm sorry?
Did anyone live in the house in 2019 when the illegal construction was going on?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Does anyone live in there now?
No, that's a okay.
Because I wanted, one note that the Building Commissioner said that he saw, he saw three air-conditioning units in the building, so the inspector noticed it, and I think that was something that they addressed. So apparently, as member Brier said, that there was some stuff going on, and were you the one that was doing the construction work?
No.
In 2019? It was not?
No. I'm just trying to take this project now to help my mom out for this project that's going on right now, so.
So it sounds like someone else was doing it? They didn't pull permits?
Right.
They didn't follow the, the process?
It could be, because I, I'm not in that time, so I don't know what exactly what's going on. So that's why, what I'm saying now, I'm trying to help out to get everything need to be done. From what I heard, the history that we also have some citation for the health department about the trash and stuff like that?
Yep.
So I've been telling her that, you know, we did try to clean it up and so on and so forth, and tried to get that going. Tried the best it's got.
Okay, so you now took over this project?
Correct.
Because your, so your family have owned this property for a while?
Yes. How much? No, you don't mind? I think it's two years now.
Many?
Two years that she owned the project, the, the house.
So she's owned it for two years?
Yes.
So what is, so back in 2019, it wasn't your family? This was someone else?
Well, I'm still, so this is my mom. She owned the house. In that two year, I didn't, I didn't involve in any of the project that time, so that's why now she asked me to help her to, to try and seek for this problem and issues, stuff like that.
The reason why I'm trying to get clarity on because of comments that the Building Commissioner said, you know, again quoting that, you know, it sounds like this is a case of someone asking for forgiveness instead of permission.
Yep.
So I, I'm trying to correlate the two. So it was someone else that was doing the construction. You came on board recently?
Correct.
And trying to rectify the issues?
Yep.
And you are going to work with upkeeping?
Correct, so I'm taking a full responsibility on it right now to do whatever needs to be done.
So you're starting over, basically?
Correct.
Okay. Remember, Brier mentioned the fact that, asking about parking spaces. You said there's four parking spaces?
Yeah, it's like a tandem parking spaces because we have a two garage in the back, and we have some land in the back, too. So I have a, we asked a professional for a land survey that we could see on that report.
That, and that, that was my question, because I noticed I was by the property yesterday, and I see a three-door garage. Are you going to? I took pictures.
Yep.
So are you going to keep the three-door garage?
Yes, at the moment, we probably gonna keep it just to fix it up, to store like some storage in there, maybe park on a car or something like that, because it will cost us a lot more just to remove it.
Okay, again, the reason why I'm asking because I want to make sure it's in the plans, but you also said that the property can hold four spaces, and if there's a three-door garage and...
Yeah, so what, what we plan to do is just like put the car inside the garage, so three, and then we probably gonna have one outside or something.
In the driveway?
Exactly.
So you don't anticipate impeding street-side parking?
No.
Okay. Yeah, as member Brier said, I don't see how we can deny this, but I think the concern is the fact that the way it was done in the past?
Correct.
And your abbot made mention the fact that she's tried to address certain issues, and it wasn't addressed. That's not neighborly, because if you're saying that your mom is going to live there, it's going to be a two-family. Is it the whole family that's going to live there, or is it just, does your mother intend?
Well, we tend to have a whole family live there, so it's like first floor, second floor, after we fix everything, after we, we appear and we get a permit and do that. So that's why I'm trying to get this going and then get everything the proper way, right way. I understand that in the past, probably that must be something did wrong, but I believe in a second chance just to bring all this up again, I mean.
Okay.
So.
The plan looks good to me, but I would also, just based on the, the comments of the Commissioner, I mean, I think it would be important that you consult, you know, your neighbors in case?
Sure.
There's any impact and see how things can be worked out.
Correct.
I don't have any more questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair organizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so I want to try to walk through what we have existing and what you're proposing. I can clearly see where the work was done based on a prior photo online on Google Maps. You enclosed a porch on the front, on the front end, right? Turned that into a playroom?
Yes, that's correct.
And now you want to turn that into basically another entryway for the?
Correct.
For the first floor?
Into the front, yes.
So, okay. So this is always, this is listed as a single-family. It's supposed to be existing as a single-family, but looking at all the proposed, looking at the existing layouts, floor plans, and what you're proposing, it looks like it possibly should have been a two-family, two-family to begin with. At least that's what, that's what's on the plans right now, and we are in a traditional two-family zone.
Correct.
So.
I mean, whatever the work that we're trying to do now, we're not adding or addition or like extend to anything at all, just whatever exists there, it just exists there, that's all.
Because I'm looking at the second floor, you got the second floor back egress, goes up to a roof deck with a separate entry, goes into an existing hall with a bathroom, and then it looks like into a living room that may have a kid, does that, does that have a kitchen in it, or does it sink at least?
Right now, it doesn't have it.
Does it have a sink in it?
Uh, I mean, sink in it? Yes, I think it does have sink in it.
Okay, because you have that listed?
There's no stove, yeah.
You have that listed as the, as existing on the second floor?
Yep.
That you go, on the second floor, existing living room with what appears to be a sink list in there? So there is a sink up there?
There's a sink there, yes, correct.
Has it been there the whole time, or?
Yeah, it's been there the whole time since we bought the house.
Since you, was it there when you purchased it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Then you got a existing hall, bedroom, two-bed, two-bedroom, that's all, and the plan is only two-bedroom upstairs, right?
Correct.
Correct, okay, all right. Okay, so it gives me an idea that, you know, when you purchased the property, it was intended to be a two-family, and for some reason, it just wound up being zoned as a single-family, maybe whatever prior, the prior owner did. I don't know, but, so I too have the concerns based on what the, what was being provided by the Building Commissioner and what your, what, what Ms. Dixon said about your upkeep of the property.
Correct.
So.
I understand that.
We got to, we got to really seriously, you know, keep, keep up with this.
This is what I said, like, you know, just give us some time to do it, and then we will take it on from there.
Yeah. As far as what you're asking for relief, I mean, you're seeking variances, what the variances you're seeking, we have minimum lot area per dwelling unit under Section 5.1, you're in a traditional two-family, which are, it's two-family, you are allowed by right, a traditional two-family to convert if you can meet the variance requirements. You're seeking relief, let's see, it's 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit requiring 8,000 square feet, and you're proposing 7250, so relief of 750 on that. Let's see, minimum side yard setback, we have, it's supposed to be 10 sum 25, you're providing three sum 19.5, but because the three-foot setback is pre-existing nonconformity, you only need 5.5 feet for the sum. And then frontage of 50 feet is required, but you're in 30 feet, and I think I've looked at some of the surrounding, some of the surrounding properties there, and they're kind of in the same realm of where you're at on frontage, and they're all two-families, so. Sorry, just trying to pull up the G I S, yeah. Yeah, we got 45, 45, 43, yeah, so. I mean, I do think you have a special hardship, I think you meet that criteria. I do think that converting this to providing the relief and turning this into a two-family, which it was, which it appears based on what's been established, based on the floor plan and based on the zone itself, it looks like it should have been a two-family to begin with.
Correct.
And adding more to the tax base would be a public good, so, and the relief you're seeking is, I'm not going to say it's minimal, it's somewhat reasonable, I guess. Understanding the concerns of the, of the neighbors, I think relief could be granted on this, but you have a lot of other issues that you're going to have to deal with, with the, with the Building Department, which they've clearly set forth as to what you need to do.
Yep.
The, whatever construction you did on that porch to enclose it, all has to come down, you have to start anew, everything's got to be?
That's fine.
Done, and it's got to be done to the, to the, you know, liking of the Building Commissioner. I believe they even said that they'll, any, any work, any further work you have to do has to be inspected.
Correct.
Pre-inspected.
Totally understand.
And I think the Building Commissioner, if I'm not mistaken, had one proposed, one proposed condition, I'm just, so according to Commissioner Fuller, inter-director Fuller now, if the board is to consider this application, one of the conditions will need to include the removal of all wallboard that has been hung since 2019. Pre-inspection will need to be conducted prior to the issuance of any permits, and without these conditions, the Building Department is not in favor of granting any variance and therefore denying the application. So if you're willing to, you're, you're willing to agree to?
Yes.
To do that, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I'd like to add that, the, like to adopt whatever, the proposed condition of Building Commissioner slash inter-director Fuller as a condition of the, of this, of granting this variance, so if, if the board would, if the board agrees, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Long, I think, as my colleague said, the previous work done by the person who've done the property before with enclosed porch, did so without permission and without any actual permits granted by the city and by the Building Department. It, is your position that you weren't involved in any of that work in 2019, sir?
No.
I, I do believe that, you know, based on the application you set forth to convert this existing single-family into a two-family, it does meet a lot of the merits and criteria and the prerequisites set forth by the variance. I think the relief you're seeking is reasonable. Again, like my colleague said, Mr. Callahan, the vice chairman, any work that you do has to be pre-inspected and pulled by the Building Department, any, any work that has to be So if you're in condition with those, we agree those conditions, and then if my colleague's okay, we'll have a six-month review period after the completion of the work, just to make sure everything's up to code and up to standard.
Correct.
Just to let you know, Mr. Long, if this does get approved tonight, and you go by, and you, and you build, convert into the two-family, and you build out the property, and six months from completion, we hear that you're not following the codes and not abiding by the Building Department, we will revoke your special permit. Do you understand that, sir?
Understood.
Okay. Any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, carry of emotion, please.
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB-2022-58 for 359 Walker Street for variance approval under Section 5.1 for relief from minimum lot area per dwelling unit, relief from minimum side yard setback, and relief from minimum frontage with the condition that removal of all wallboard that's been hung on the property in prior construction since 2019 be done, and the Building Department to conduct a pre-inspection prior to the issuance of any permits.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Callahan, second one, Mr. Prokop. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman pick.
Approval conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approval conditions.
Member Prokop?
Approval conditions.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Hovey?
Approval conditions.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck, sir, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening, thank you. Uh, moving on to our next business, on the new business, we have ZBA-2022-61. The petition is a special permit, the applicant is Julia Silva, property located at 11 Mill Street. Julia Silva has applied to the zoning board of appeals, seeking to add a microblading service to the existing salon. The subject property is located in traditional mixed-use TMU zoning district, that proposed requires special permit approval pursuant to Article 12.41 for a body art establishment. Good evening, ma'am, can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Julia Silva, I am the owner of I Love Beauty. We are currently located at 19 Mill Street, um, and we are moving to 11 Mill Street, and I am a statistician and I am also a microblading artist, I am Liz Seisen, and at this moment I have a place at Austin. So we are here seeking approval to add microblading as a service to the new location at 11 Mill Street, and that's it.
Okay, thank, thank you, ma'am. If you have no further comments or questions, we'll open up here into the public.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone who speaks in opposition, what's petition, opposition, opposition, seeing none, that portion of property is closed, anyone who wishes to speak in favor, in favor, in favor, seeing none, that portion of property is closed. We're gonna open up question, the comments to the board. Uh, the chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Briere, Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the subject property is obviously in the TMU zoning district, which means the, the salon is, is legal by right, uh, to be operating there, there's surely adequate parking, and as long as you're in, in, um, agreeance to work with the board of health
Yeah.
for any additional approvals or permits, I support the petition, best of luck.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Briere. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Proko, Mr. Proko, floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Member Briere, I don't have much issue with this, um, as long as, you know, those guidelines are met. I did have to look up what microblading is, but.
Microblading is the art of mimic the hair, natural hair. We use a special tool to scratch the skin and apply pigment to make, uh, hair strokes mimicking natural hair.
Sound painful, painful. Yeah. Good luck with your endeavors. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Proko. Uh, the chair recognizes, uh, the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Ms. Silva, for coming before the board on this and providing us a masterclass on microblading, cause none of us know what it, what it is, so. Um, one, uh, one thing I brought up, I think someone mentioned it to me too, but if you can confirm, um, it said you had to, you might have to get approval from the health department, but you've already gotten that, right?
Yes.
Yep. Someone, that, that, someone had already mentioned, someone asked me about the petition and mentioned that you'd already gotten your, gone before the board of health and gotten the approval, so, and this is the only thing, so, but, um, yeah, so this, uh, I mean, it's, it seemed, there's plenty of parking in the area, um, you already have a existing salon at this point right now, this business, business is going well, I presume?
Yes.
So it's just, it's great to, that you're expanding on your business and trying to, and keeping it within the community, uh, and, you know, I wish you the absolute best of luck, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you, Ms. Callahan. Uh, the chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Hovey, Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Like some of the other board members, I had no idea what microblading is, but I did have an advantage, cause my daughter's in cosmetology, so I had a nice conversation with her, and, um, I know some of the concern was, um, maybe the transition to tattooing, and she kind of explained to me, it's, they're not in the same ballpark. And, uh, a question for you, are you only gonna have one station in the salon for microblading?
Yes, I gonna have, um, so the room has to follow the special guidelines from, from the board of health, so we're gonna have one room prepared especially for it.
Certainly. And, um, as far as kind of the traffic concerns or, or, um, the amount of customers coming to you, microblading takes, according to my research, and I'm sure, um, one of the other board members said he looked into it too, are, are we looking like an hour-ish per session?
Yes, but, uh, we do have a lot of parking that is designated to our business.
Certainly.
Yes.
And so if you filled up your appointment book, uh, for a full days of work, you're talking about maybe eight if you have a full session of people coming in?
Usually we do one, two treatments, um, per day, because we have guidelines to follow
Sure.
that includes, um, sanitizing and cleaning, and we don't go more than
Awesome.
one, two.
Nope, I wish you luck, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Hovey. Um, Ms. Silva, I'm, I'm actually very excited about this project, I'm, I'm glad, it sounds like business as well, so you're adding this service, uh, again, to my colleagues, um, I don't know much about this either, but, you know, it's in the realm of, um, beauty and healthcare and all that, and, um, as long as you go into the proper channels to work with the board of health for all the, um, health or sanitary issues, I think, I think it's a great, you know, uh, service for the city, I'm sure a lot of people use it. Again, that plaza is, it's a nice big plaza, so it has a good amount of parking, so I'm not, I'm not concerned of any, um, extra flow of traffic or vehicles. So, you know, I, I, I don't have any concerns with this, so. Any other comments from my colleagues before we move forward with the motion? Seeing none, can you have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2022-61 for 11 Mill Street, the applicant is Julia Silva, for a special permit approval pursuant to Article 12.4L for a body art establishment for microblading.
Motion by Mr. Callahan, second by Mr. Proko, can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck?
Uh, approve.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member Proko?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Hovey?
Approved.
All right, you've been approved, wish you the best of luck, ma'am. Have a good night, thank, thank you, best of luck.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for coming out tonight. Uh, moving on, in, on next agenda item, on the new business, we have ZBA-2022-62 of variance. The applicant is the Dorothy Clary Revocable Trust, property located at 14 Newell Street. The trust has applied to the zoning board of appeals, seeking approval to construct a new single-family home at 14 Newell Street. Subject property is located in the traditional two-family zoning district, the proposal requires variance approval pursuant to section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot size, minimum frontage, minimum side yard setback, and minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirements and any of the required on the laws or ordinance. Good evening, counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary and Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing Martha Clary as trustee of the Dorothy Clary Revocable Trust. Martha is the owner of the property and with us tonight, also with us tonight is Richard Richmond, a representative of the, uh, trust, and we have Matt Hammer of Landplex Engineering. Uh, as the chairman mentioned, this application involves a request for variances pursuant to 5.1 of the city's zoning ordinance. Uh, the subject property is a vacant lot located at 14 Newell Street in the traditional two-family zoning district. The lot consists of approximately 4,618 square feet of land. Uh, the applicant's proposing to construct a three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath home. The home will also include a single-car garage and driveway, so there'll be sufficient off-street parking as well as plenty of usable open space on the lot. Subject property has been in Martha's family for decades, the immediate family members have moved away from the area, and the family home at 20 Newell Street was sold in April of 2019, uh, leaving this vacant separately taxed parcel of land. We provided the board with the site plan, which includes a zoning chart and the landscaping that's proposed to be on the lot, we've also provided floor plans and elevations of the proposed new home. The applicant's seeking relief from the ordinance relative to minimum lot size, minimum frontage, minimum side yard setback, and lot area per dwelling unit. Uh, Newell Street is a dead-end street which runs off of Chelmsford Street and consists mostly of single-family homes, the immediate neighborhood consists of single-family homes, multifamily apartment buildings, condominiums, and neighborhood businesses. Uh, for purposes of demonstrating that the proposed construction of this single-family home, uh, is in character with the neighborhood, I've incorporated an exhibit into our application that, uh, shows numerous single-family homes of similarly sized lots within the neighborhood. The applicant and the applicant's architect have gone through great lengths and great effort to design a home that would complement the existing homes on Newell Street. And if you look at page two of the architectural plans, you'll see, uh, and you'll note that there's an inset picture that depicts a street perspective of the home and how it, how it, how it fits onto the lot and how it looks running down, looking down Newell Street. Um, I'd suggest to the board that the architect did a great job of, of designing a home that fits into this particular lot. Uh, with regard to the staff comments, the, uh, the staff points out that the frontage is in line with, uh, many of the other homes along Newell Street. Comments also point out that the lot is smaller than most lots on Newell Street, that is true, although there are a couple of lots on the street that are similar size, and again, the exhibit that I provided in the application demonstrates many, many homes, uh, within the neighborhood that are similarly sized. Um, comments go on to point out that there's sufficient off-street parking with the proposal, and the proposal, if approved, would have a positive impact on the, uh, on the housing crisis that we're enduring in the city. Ultimately, the petition meets the criteria for issuance of the requested variances in that there's a special hardship owing to the circumstances relating to the size of this lot, but not to the, uh, not affecting generally the zoning district. When this neighborhood was originally laid out, most of the lots were smaller than what is required by today's ordinance. So the fact that we're left with a undersized lot presents a financial hardship to the applicant if they're not able to develop this lot. In addition, there's no detriment to the public good by granting the requested relief. In fact, increasing the city's housing stock is consistent with the city's master plan and sustainable goal 2025. The construction of the home will help fill the gap of the, uh, lack of middle housing within the city, uh, by creating a reasonably priced home for a family. Uh, and finally, the granting of the variance would not nullify or derogate from the intent of the zoning district. There are many homes within a few hundred feet of this property that are similarly sized, as I indicated previously and, and as we have shown on the exhibit attached to the plan. So for those reasons, we believe that we meet the criteria for issuance of the variance, variance is requested tonight, and we respectfully request approval tonight. Uh, I also mentioned that I've submitted to the, uh, DPD, uh, a couple of letters in support, as well as a letter signed by, uh, several neighbors in support of the application. So at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Matt, who will go through the site plan with the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Good evening, Mr. Hammer.
Uh, good evening, members of the board. Uh, for the record, Matt Hammer, Landplex Engineering, 10 George Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. Here is Newell Street here, um, the parcel is 4,618 square feet. We're proposing a 12-foot wide driveway with a paved area in front, um, which will accommodate one parking space, as well as a garage that's 12 by 24 feet, which will accommodate the additional parking space. This is the dwelling here, which is a, a single-family dwelling with a deck on the back. Um, as you can see, there's, uh, ample amount of, uh, green space on the property, um, which exceeds the usable open space requirement of 500, uh, square feet, and this property's gonna have 920 square feet. Um, this property will also have drainage, uh, out here in front, as well as a swale to bring drainage around the property. And additionally, um, the, uh, the owner is proposing to do a solid white fence along the side of the lot line, to do two, um, deciduous trees in the way of two maple trees that are gonna be located here and here, and also to provide some additional screening in the rear, uh, we're gonna be proposing five balsam firs along the rear property line. This is a view, a perspective view of the front of the, the dwelling. It's gonna have a roofed, um, uh, overhang over the front entranceway, also some overhangs off the front and off the side here as well. There's also, um, a, um, two different materials which has been proposed on this, which would be clapboards on the first and second floor, and then a different, uh, texture, uh, on the, on the gable of the building. And then here's the garage, door entrance on the left of the building facing. On the second sheet. Do you want to show you this up to you here? This is a perspective view, uh, of the dwelling on Newell Street, showing the, the dwelling here. This is the front entranceway with an entry, a family room, a kitchen in the rear with a laundry room and a bathroom on the, on the first level. The second level will have, uh, three bedrooms, two bedrooms in the rear, a bedroom in the front with a, um, combined bathroom area located in the center. And the building, uh, is gonna consist of 2,600, approximately 2,600 square feet. And I can put it to the board for any questions.
So that's all you have from us at this point, but we're happy to answer any questions, uh, from the board members. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, counselor. Now, all questions, comments, or questions, uh, to the.
Um, parking, because they have no off-street parking. Um, the biggest concern of most of the houses is parking, but also the fact that, as the attorney spoke about, is that way back in the day, in the 1800s, all of that, most of the properties were two parcels of land, which have since been joined because they've been sold. This was two parcels of land that were joined together, um, that the family built a house on, and, um, when it was sold to me, or the year before it was sold to myself and my husband, who's also here today behind me, um, the parcels were divided, which made our house non-conforming, um, and I was actually told that I had to come in front of the board and get a variance, but they would take care of that after the fact. So it was very bizarre, very, um, strange. The neighbors that, um, some, some, some of the neighbors, they're, they're, um, it doesn't fit in the neighborhood. It doesn't fit in the neighborhood. They're saying that all the other houses are well-spaced out. This is a very small lot. I believe with the engineering plans, the trees, the fences are actually presented to be on the line of the properties that are there. Also, the water drains from all of our properties into that piece of land. What, I understand you're going to read what the neighbors have said, but there was a neighbor that was trying to call in, there was another one who has COVID. The house directly in front on Chelmsford Street, their garage is actually part of, I guess, the property line, is my understanding, is actually goes through that garage, but I would think it'd be grandfathered in at this point. So their lot size is actually smaller than what is being presented if we're not discounting that garage that is already there. That garage is very close to the lot where that side variance is needed, and everyone in that home is a four family, have lived there for 10-plus, if not 17-plus years, and are just like, what do you mean? What are you doing? Like, we don't have parking on Chelmsford Street, so many of us park there. This is an open lot. We have wildlife here, we have trees that have been growing for years. Why are they going to put, where are they going to put a house on that lot? The family directly across the street, who wrote two letters, are very concerned about parking, about the change of the area, and they've been there for 30-plus years. There's other people who've just moved into the neighborhood who are worried about it. Like I said, there's others on Chelmsford Street, there's ones directly across the street. I know it's been presented that various people on the street, actually one family, the wife signed for it, and I don't think she knew what she was signing, because the husband invited me into the house and he said, absolutely not, there is no space to put, 21 Newell Street, there is no space to put another house there. How are they going to put a house there? And he said, absolutely not, this doesn't make sense. How is this going to go through? We have zoning laws for a reason. It's 6,000 square feet, how are they going to do that? The only other lot that's anywhere close to undersized is actually my lot, because by dividing that parcel, those two parcels, it made my lot non-conforming, I guess, if the right word. There is no other lot on that street other than a prior lot that was built on 1930 that has plenty of parking and isn't close to the house on Chelmsford Street, because it doesn't have a garage next to it, and that's over 5,500 feet. Attorney Gary came up with a financial hardship, and the fact that he basically said that is appalling to me. This house is, this lot, this parcel of land, is not a financial hardship to this family. They divided the lot when they sold it, when the whole family inherited the lot from their grandparents. So the financial hardship is that they're not able to build on it, reap the benefits of building a house in Lowell and then leaving. And that, to me, is appalling that he even mentioned that it would be a financial hardship. I had asked about a hardship, and I thought the hardship was in the fact that the area, the lot size, those types of hardships, but financial hardship, this is not. This is someone who, or some ones, who are reaping benefits off of the fact that their family was from Lowell and taking advantage of the city's master plan, which you can manipulate however they want to, saying that we need housing. Yes, we are in a housing crisis. Putting one house in this area, in the part of Highlands where it is, and just dumping it there, there's so many other things that you can do if you want to benefit Lowell. I mean, you can redo another property. Taking away the land, the open space where we have on that street, and changing how that street is set up and then leaving is not beneficial. It's not going to benefit the neighbors that have lived there for 10s, 20 years and plus. And we've been taking care of the lot for the last three and a half years. So if it was of a concern, why was someone not taking care of the lot for the last three and a half years? This is not, they're not coming here. The only reason they come here to Lowell is to harass my neighbors and tell them, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, please sign this, this is beneficial to you. But they haven't taken care of the lot, and most of the neighbors are in opposition of it. It does not fit in that space. And I'm putting upon you, and I actually have three more signatures that were given to me today, and some of the housing owners also were like, oh, we didn't know the hearing was tonight. So the signatures increased. So I can present those to you. I made six copies, and I have an original here. If you'd like those other three signatures, or I can give them to you after the fact.
We'll take them now, that's okay, ma'am. Yeah.
That's the original. And here's our copies. Do I pass them on, or do you want to give them?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is that, is all the comments you had?
That's all the comments that I have today. Like I said, I know someone else is trying to call in, I don't know if they're able to, and a couple of other people weren't able to come, and then there are letters, and I'm sure that there will be more to follow. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Is anyone on Zoom or phone call anything for any of this?
No one on Zoom has spoken up to speak. There is one person in Zoom? Okay.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, go ahead. Just state your name and address the record, and just let us know what you want to say.
Kendra Giuliano, 684 Chelmsford Street, first floor. I don't know what happened.
Go ahead, we can hear you, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I don't want the house there, it's going to take up parking. It just doesn't fit the community. Sorry, I can't really talk too much.
Okay. Are you all set, ma'am, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, scene done, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wish to speak in favor? Yeah, go ahead, ma'am, if you want to come to the lectern, your name and address for the record, and just let us know.
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening, ma'am.
My name is Ray Santos, I live on 26 Newell Street, I've been there for 48 years. There were seven houses on the street when I bought my house, and we built one right across the street, so we have eight. We have no problem with another one being built. I have some comments here. As far as parking goes, the house that's on the corner that four family, there's eight parking spots. If you face the house from Chelmsford Street...
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm sorry, can you pull the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you hear me, everything else? Okay. The house on the corner that has four families, there's eight parking spots. If you look at the house from Chelmsford Street, the two people from downstairs have, the one on this side have two parking spots, the one on that side have two parking spots. The people upstairs, on each side have a garage they park, and they can park their other car behind it. So there's garage parking there. As far as the trees, we have beautiful trees in that yard that's on the left side of the house if it's built, and in the back does not block the sun or anything. We have no water problems. Let's see. Yep, I got that. Yep, that's I've got it, I guess. I think it's a nice house to be built on that street, it's a nice neighborhood. Everybody on the street signed for it, except for one. Okay. A little nervous, I've never done this before. All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak in favors, petition?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Those are yours, sorry. Good evening, my name is Nancy Judge, I reside at 28 Fosh Street in the Highlands section of Lowell. I also am the co-chair of the Highlands Neighborhood Association. I was asked for my opinion regarding 14 Newell Street, and would I speak in favor of the project. I stated that I would have to review the project before I could commit to doing so. So I went by the property, looked at the plans, great character of the house, plenty of parking. I did go to the registry of deeds for the lot sizes of the other homes in the area, though this house is on an undersized lot. As far as I know, most of the neighbors were in support of the project, so I felt that at this time I could speak for the project and ask that you support the project. So basically, that's what I'm doing. I would appreciate you taking all into consideration, and let's see what happens. So I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to read a few things into the record. We did get a communication on December 7th. These are for support. This letter is dated for December 7th. It says, addressed to the board. Dear Mr. Chairman, I'm joining this letter of support in order to force my support in regard to an application by Martha Cleary to the zoning board of appeals to construct a new single-family home on a vacant lot at 14 Newell Street. I am familiar with the lot, and I believe that a new single-family home on this lot would be of benefit to the neighborhood and the city of Lowell. And they got quite a few names and dates and addresses of letter of support for that communication. And then we also got another letter of communication dated for the 9th, we got this today, actually, myself at least. Dear Chairman and members, please accept this petition in opposition to building a single-family home on the parcel at 14 Newell Street. I am familiar with the street and area that is being presented. I am signed this because I do not believe a single-family home being built on an undersized lot needing multiple variances for frontage and side yard and lot area in general is good for the street and neighborhood or Lowell, there's not enough parking in Chelmsford Street with the multiple businesses that use off-street parking and multiple family homes that do not have sufficient parking. A home being erected in this area with such a small lot size does not benefit the neighborhood, the wildlife, the trees, and does not keep with the city's master plan to preserve the unique quality and character of each Lowell neighborhood dated December 9th. This letter has a good amount of names, a dozen or so names and addresses, people in opposition. There another one dated, same letter dated for December 11th, one name and date in opposition. And then one of the speakers gave us another same letter in opposition, three names and addresses in opposition. So I wanted to read all those communications we got in favor and support of this project before I open up questions and comments to the board with the petitioner. Mr. Gary, would you like to say anything, sir?
Yes, sure. So was the public hearing closed for proponents as well? Before I speak, I just wanted to make sure you closed.
Yeah, yeah, I'm also, yeah, I read both in favor.
So it sounds to me like the overriding concern of the neighbors is parking. So we are providing sufficient off-street parking here. I think that the four family that was mentioned a couple of times just in front of this property on the corner of Chelmsford and Newell Street has sufficient parking. So we can't solve other people's parking problems, but we're also not adding to the parking problem on the street. We are providing sufficient off-street parking for this proposal. As far as the trees on the lot go, the most of the trees are on the edges of the lot, the westerly side and the northerly side of the lot, most of that will remain intact, and we'll be adding, I think it's seven trees, as part of the landscape plan. So it sounds like there's some opposition, and there's people in favor of the application. I think, looking at the merits of the project, it would warrant approval. We're providing additional housing in the city, we've designed a home that has fit nicely onto this lot, in character with the neighborhood, in character with the street.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
If there's no further comments, we'll open up questions and comments to the board.
Sure.
Oh, did you want to say something? Go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Mark Mello, I'm at 90 Lincoln Street in Lowell.
Good evening.
I actually, good evening, Counselors. I was interested in buying the land myself for some, to build like a garage, a storage garage on it, because of the minimum setbacks on it. The people that bought the house next to it were given the first opportunity to buy the lot, and, you know, the off-street parking, there's plenty of off-street parking on the street, it's people parking in front of this one lot that they're afraid they're going to lose. So, you know, it's been going on for a few years now and stuff like that. The people that own the property and stuff, they were good enough to divide it, because they couldn't afford to sell the whole thing at the time, the person that wanted to buy it. So they did divide it, knowing that it was going to be divided. And again, the people that bought that house were given the first opportunity to purchase the land, to keep it the way it was. So I think it's unfair that the owners of the land now would be limited, you know. I think it's better for the city for them to be building a single-family home than me trying to get approval to build a storage garage or something like that for my company. So that's all my comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before I open up questions and comments to the board, anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of this petition? I'll let you speak, ma'am, but you have to keep it brief, okay?
I, I'm confused. We did respond, we received a letter from Attorney Gary's office. We called October 18th and never heard back, and this is where we are. We offered, we want to join the lot together, the parcels together, and leave it open. We never heard anything back, so I'm kind of confused by that actual comment. So...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gary, did you want to comment, sir?
Yes, we did send a letter to Ms. Barboza, asking her if she had any interest in purchasing the land. She replied with an offer that simply wasn't worth responding to. Simple as that. She's been using the yard for her purposes. I understand it, it's a vacant side yard, there's no, you know, if it's there, I'd use it too, but, you know, it's not her yard. Leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. All right, we're going to close the public hearing now, we're going to open questions and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop flows your serve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Gary, did you see the engineer's response? I don't know if...
We did not.
We got it today, so I wasn't sure.
Are there comments from the engineer?
Sure, yeah, there were a couple of comments, I just wanted to, I don't want to read it, Bear with me here. Thank you.
Mr. Katrumbis, did that go out to the petitioner, the comments that we got today?
I'm not sure if Peterson...
No.
They did not.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, he brought up some general points, and I'll just, you're reading it now, but it says that the proposed fence left, to the left of the house shows that the fence post encroaching onto the abutting property. The fence should be shown in its entirety at 14 Newell, so it can be constructed without encroaching the neighbors, the neighbors' property. And the other part he mentioned about the trees, which, again, I'm just wondering if that makes the property, you know, even smaller. So the proposed trees at the rear of the property are shown over the property line to the abutting property.
Can I hang on to this?
Yes, yeah, that's yours. I apologize, Mr. Gary.
I got it here.
So you're asking if the first comment, if the, if the, let's propose fence to the left of the house shows the fence post encroaching onto the abutting property... left of the house shows the fence post encroaching onto the abutting property, fence should be shown in entirety on the lot. Obviously, any fence that's installed on the lot will be installed subject, you know, we've had a survey done, so it's easy enough to locate the lot line and install the fence on the lot line. According, go ahead, Mark.
That's correct. This is a line type, so the scaling isn't, you know, you know, might show a line going over. It's just a line type. The entire, the fence in its entirety will be completely on the lot. As well as the trees here as well.
Okay, because he also, they also mentioned, referenced the trees and the rear of the property.
Yeah, we'll make sure that those are completely on the lot.
Okay, so it doesn't minimize the property line even less?
No, it does not.
Thank you.
But ultimately, we can comply with any engineering concerns.
Okay, and so we could, Mr. Chairman, we could make that as a condition?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, of course, yes.
I mean, overall, the plan looks plausible. And I, and to your point, Attorney Gary, I don't see that developing this property with a driveway and a garage is impeding on the parking of the property. I think it does fit into the neighborhood, even though it's a little bit, you know, smaller, but that's just the way the lot is. So I would be voting in favor of this. I don't see much we can do as far as, I mean, I know there is some opposition, but I'm not sure if the opposition is necessarily based on any variances that's needed. And again, I'm not making an argument against people who are opposing, but I'm just looking at the facts. You know, you have a driveway, you have a garage, it's a single-family. I don't see how that is going to impact the whole neighborhood in a negative manner. So I'll listen to other members of the Board to get their opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The Chair recognizes the Vice Chair, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through, Mr. Chairman. I think Attorney Gary, minimally, we're going to need new site plan because I do see part of the fence. It is, I mean, just for the record, it is showing that it's encroaching on the garage because there's a little browned-out area there that's kind of, looks like it's going straight in through the garage. So we got to, just for the, for clarity purposes, I just want to make sure.
Yes, to clarify, Mr. Callahan, the fence is going to go up to the garage. The garage is encroaching over the property line.
Okay. All right, so.
So the neighbor garage.
The neighbor's garage is encroaching on Ms.
Yeah, the rear garage from the Chelmsford Street property that encroaches very minimally into this property.
Okay, all right. I was under the impression that the plan set, you were encroaching.
Yeah, no.
No.
That's what I thought, too.
Okay, all right. That clarifies everything, so, okay. Well, I guess if there's any battles with regards to that, you'll deal with it.
We have, the.
You'll deal with it when the time comes.
The juror did not enforce that encroachment and likely doesn't intend to.
So as far as the, I see, you got the proposed maple in the back, which is, which is a good added feature to that. What about the second tree? Is that going to be the same thing? Is it going to be proposed med rapal?
That's correct.
Okay, so, all right. If that one wasn't marked, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, too.
For clarification, it says typical one of two.
Oh, I see that, okay. Sorry, I missed that.
That's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. Appreciate that. Also, on, with regards to the 20 Newell Street side, what's the, what's the plans for shading on that side? Is there going to be a fence over on that side? Because there's nothing, it doesn't look like there's anything marked, or is it just going to be open?
We have no barrier proposed on that side with a fence.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I was just kind of curious on that, too, so it's, I mean, as far as the driveway, I mean, I understand the concerns about the parking, and it seems, like you said, it seems to be the main issue here, but I think you've been very restrained on the plans here, setting as far as the shape of the house, the layout, the driveway, that you provided for a garage for one car and then the proposed driveway behind it. And, Mr. Hammer, I always love the fact you put that little turn thing in, too. It's always a good added addition to that, which in this instance, I think that seems to fit. I mean, it's a good, you know, it's good, it'll be good for, for the property owner on this, so. Again, I understand the concerns, but I'm looking at the, just looking at the way this is proposed, as far as what you're seeking for relief. I understand the lot area is a big concern, but to your point, Attorney Gary, yeah, there's, the 120 is, is below.
Directly across.
Across the street, directly across the street is below. It's about 5,000 and change. Also, looking at the way that the map, that zone is mapped out, Chumstead Street is zoned TMU. So you're right bordering TMU zone on that, which if you were in the TMU zone, you wouldn't have any issues with regards to the lot area, lot size at all. Not that we have to deal with, we obviously have to deal with the lot as it is, but part of the, part of the criteria is the special hardship in the shape and size and topography. And the way the lot is situated, it's kind of in a weird square. I forget what they call those. We'll try to, ob, 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 trying.
Trapezoid.
Trapezoid, trapezoid, oh, yeah. So it's in a, it's a weird shaped lot. And so I believe you do have, you meet the special hardship criteria. The public good would be, again, another piece of property, increasing the tax rolls and providing further housing in the already needed area. And I think the intent of zoning, this probably would fit in the intent of zoning. So I do, I do feel that you do meet the criteria for the variance approval, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The Chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Seeing this project at first, I had some concerns. I'm familiar with the neighborhood. I understand parking's an issue in the neighborhood. Seeing the engineering comments with the trees on the property line and the fence on the property line was already addressed. I appreciate that. We're talking about minimum side setbacks. It looks like on the right with 20 Newell Street is, we're at code on that side, correct? We're really looking for relief on the left side where the, where the parking garage is encroaching on the property line.
Right.
As it is. And then I believe beyond that parking garage is parking, correct?
Well.
To the left there, there's.
So the answer first, yeah, the side setback is met for the.
For the right side.
For the right side. So in order to get in a garage, a one-bay garage, that's where the variance came into play.
Right.
On that setback. Because it narrows as you head towards the rear of the property.
Certainly. So we could take off the garage and then you don't have to go for a side setback.
Correct.
Which is not something we want to do because parking, again, is at a premium in the area. So I understand the concern about parking in the area, but we can't penalize a project that has met the needs for parking. I mean, you have a garage for one car and then the driveway for a second car.
In the intent of locating the garage on that side was to be next to the other garage.
Understood.
On that side, so that was the reason for putting it onto that side.
Certainly. So I think with the conditions of moving the trees off the line, moving the fence off the property line, we have parking there, I don't see an issue. I mean, parking's premium, so you guys are actually trying to address parking as a concern in that neighborhood. Again, very familiar with the neighborhood. I just drove by that again tonight. It fits the character of the neighborhood. It's not a massive project that's going to overwhelm the neighborhood character. So I don't have an issue with this. I like, you know, you tried to fit it in there. I had initially some concerns with, well, what's the lot being used as now? Because I know some of the concerns was it's being used for wildlife and et cetera and et cetera. But if you look on Google Maps, if you drive by, it's actually, it looks like it's being used for function. The grass is mowed, the trees are set back. So we're really not losing some kind of, a lot of green space besides the dwelling on top of it. So I don't have an issue with this upon the conditions that have been set forth.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The Chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Clearly, the plan does not derogate from the spirit of zoning. The character of the neighborhood is maintained and perhaps even enhanced. The parking is adequate. I've read the concerns of those who stood in opposition and honestly believe that those concerns have been addressed more than adequately, to the point where we should view this petition very favorably. I think that approving this petition would be consistent with previous approvals we've made on similar-sized lots. I stand in favor, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Mr. Gary, you know, I, I think this vacant lot that he's trying to construct a single-family home on is, it's, you know, it's a nice lot, even though it's empty, it's not a dilapidated lot with, you know, random junk on or anything of that. You know, I, you know, and I appreciate all the speakers who came tonight, whether you're against or in favor. I always, you know, me and my colleagues listen to all the sides and we really try to weigh out all the negative and, you know, all the pros and cons and everything, you know. And I think just looking with all the paperwork and the neighbors and the butters, you know, I think it's almost the same amount of people in favor and against. I think from my perspective, you know, it's something that fits in with zoning with the neighborhood. You know, I could even say that I think a single-family being built in this is actually very much in line with the character of the neighborhood and for that zoning district. I think, I think you and your clients could have even, maybe even asked for a two-family, probably would have been harder, you know, but I think a single-family, it's well in line with that street and with the neighborhood. And it's, you know, it's, it's a two-family zoning district, so I do think it fits in actually quite nicely and to the, to the needs of everyone in the city and throughout, everywhere in the Commonwealth and just everywhere. It's, you know, a need for housing is needed. So I think this little single-family built on this lot will actually work out well in terms of the quote, you know, some people tonight, the master plan and just the housing need overall, so. You know, I, again, thank you for all the people who came and spoke tonight. I know it's not, it's not always difficult, whether you're in favor or against. It's, doesn't get any easier on this side either, so just to let folks know. Again, we appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you for the detailed plans. So with that being said, I think you heard the comments of my colleagues, Mr. Gary, and you already mentioned that you and your client will comply with any comments made by engineering.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
I was actually going to ask that, if that we have conditioned that with regards to the fence, the fence and the, and the trees, but I guess if we condition it on the applicant will comply, will comply with comments of engineering or something, or, because.
Yeah, that would be satisfactory.
You'd be in agreement.
Because I was starting to think, Mr. Attorney Gary, because you mentioned that the garage is actually encroaching on your client's.
Yeah.
Property, conditioning it for the fence to go around it, and then is that going to ultimately lead to your client not reaping the benefit of something and possibly opening up to adverse possession?
Right, and as I mentioned, we're going to stop that fence right at the, right at the garage.
Right at the back of the garage? Okay. All right, that, I guess that would solve, that would solve everything.
Yeah, that would solve that problem.
But I guess if we just condition it on the applicant will comply with comments of engineering or something to that effect.
That's fine.
Perfect. Can we have a motion?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion on ZB 2022-62 for a 14 Newell Street for variance approval under section 5.1 for minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum lot area, minimum lot frontage, and minimum side yard setback, with the condition that the applicant will comply with the comments of engineering.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Callahan, second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member Prokop.
Approve it conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Tubby.
Approve the conditions.
All right, you can approve.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you so much. If you have any side conversations, if you can just move it to the hallway, we would appreciate it. Moving on to the next agenda item. Just moving on to our next agenda item, under other business, we have a variance extension request at 733 to 735 Broadway Street. Boston Capital Development LLC has applied to the zoning board of appeal seeking a variance extension for the proposed 52-unit affordable housing development. Their proposal received variance approval in December 21st, 2021. The proposed six-month extension would extend the variance approval to June 21st, 2023. Good evening, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Martin offices at 491 Dutton Street in Lowell, appearing for the applicant Boston Capital. We were here almost a year ago, and the Board may recall, the Board approved a project, a 52-unit, 52-unit residential apartment complex on the site of what is now the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. We have an agreement to purchase from the food bank. The reason for the extension is we're still waiting financing, final financing. We are working with the Department of Community and Development at the state, and it's just, that's their process. This is how long it takes. We do have very favorable reception from DHCD. They like the project. Since we were here originally, we've since received approval of the planning board, the historic board. As part of the DHCD process, they like to see city support of this project, and the city has committed home funds. So folks are very enthusiastic about the project. It just takes this long sometimes to get through the DHCD funding mechanism. So we are diligently approving that, and we've been encouraged by the response we've had from DHCD, but we do need an extension for the six months.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I'll just open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor, in favor, seeing none. That portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed. We're going to open questions and comments to the Board. The Chair recognizes the Vice Chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any general objections, but when we, when there's extensions and we put conditions on things, I find this to be an opportunity to find out what the status on some of these conditions that we put on our attorney, Martin. So the only, the only, we only had three of them. Two of them, I think, are pretty self-evident and probably don't need an update, but I can double-check. One was the applicant shall reserve one parking space for each dwelling unit. I think that's, that's still the plan?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Applicant shall allow access to parking area via parking pass to ensure residents have access to reserved spaces. That's self, I mean, that could be for later on, and that's nothing. The one, the other one, the applicant shall submit a landscaping plan for DPD approval. Has that been done yet, or is that still in flux?
I would. I would say the final has not been done, but we did submit plans with, we had a site plan approval and a special permit with the planning board, so-
Okay.
-they did approve the project, but there are conditions in their permit to come back with some final-
Okay.
-plantings.
Okay. Now, now, just like I said, just find this opportunity, when we, when we grant things with conditions, to find out what the status of those conditions are as far as the granting of the extension. I, I don't, I mean, I don't think this is, I don't see this being much of an issue, and hoping the project goes, goes forward, 'cause I think it'll be extremely beneficial to the city, so, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
I have no questions on this.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Havi. Chair recognizes Mr. Brier.
I had previously recused myself from debate on this petition and think it'd be appropriate for me to do so again this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't have any issues with the extension. So, do you have any idea, I, I think you said the only thing that you're waiting is the procurement of the financing?
So I guess I, we expect that we'll have financing in place from DHCD sometime in the spring of 2023, and our hope is to begin construction by summer 2023, early summer.
So, so in six months, we'll come back before the board with the approvals, the site plan, I mean, the approved site plans and whatever else is necessary?
So I don't know that we need to be back before the board. If we get the extension, we just get a, a building permit at that time.
Okay, all right, good, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. Mr. Martin, I think this is a formality, like, again, I think this is a very exciting project, a very, it's actually a very great opportunity for the city in terms of housing and, and the added stock to the housing need, so anything that we can do to support, I think, yeah, I think we're all in favor, so, you know, I think to, to me, it's no brainer in the extension request. So hopefully, best of luck with the, the funds and the, the process for that, I know it's, can be tricky, this is a, a very major project, so. Any other comments by my colleagues before we move forward with the vote? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-55 for 733-735 Broadway Street to extend the previously approved variance for six months.
Motion by Mr. Callahan, second by Mr. Prokop. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the extension.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve extension for six months.
Member Prokop.
Approve extension for six months.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right, you've been approved.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time this evening.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Martin. All right, moving on to-
Just make sure it's on the record, remember Brier recused himself on that last vote, I just want to make sure, so that's on the record, so.
Yep, it's on there.
Yeah, you, you didn't call him on the roll call, so he can say recusal, so, just want to make sure. No big deal, it's just, gotta make sure it's on the record, you know?
Thank, thank you, Ms. Callahan, yep. All right, moving on to our next agenda item, under other business, we have minutes for approval for November 28th, 2022. Do we have any edits, comments, corrections, additions for the minutes by my colleagues? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion for the minutes, please?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for November 28th, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Callahan, second by Mr. Prokop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any poll say nay, the ayes have it, the minutes have been approved. Any other further comments or questions for my colleagues before we move to adjourn?
Just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and we'll see you on the flip side in 2023.
Agreed, thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. All right, can we have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Callahan?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Callahan to adjourn, second by Mr. Prokop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any poll say nay, the ayes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you, and have a good night, folks.